That's right, you too, Rick. Let's get that sign down. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, anything. Ah, thanks for doing that. No T-shirts either that have words on it. No bow ties. No, no, no Browns shirt. No, I'm just absolutely kidding. Of course. Okay. The Browns did score thirty-three. So that's something to celebrate for everybody. I'm not. They scored thirty-three. Okay, the informal city commission is called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop? Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Uh, before us to the management take the meeting, Dr. Estrop is recovering from a surgery, and he's doing well, and he wanted to make sure that you knew that he would be here, but that's the only reason he's not. Thank you. Brian?
Yes, Commission, we have one work session item tonight, and that is a presentation on the Clark County Parks Levy, uh, which is presented by our Parks Director, Leanne Castillo, and the Committee for Parks Chair, Hal Goodrich.
Thank you, um, Commissioners and Mayor for having us tonight. I did pass out at each of your seats. This is just an informational, um, card that talks about things we've done over the past ten years. Our newest, um, activity guide. And then this is a PowerPoint just of some of the high points of what I'm going to be speaking about, so you have that for your reference later. But, um, we appreciate you, um, letting us come tonight. And the combined efforts of the Clark County Park District and National Trail Parks and Recreation District are an essential piece of the quality of life for our community. And together, we play a key role in community development, um, while we host affordable, if not most times, free events and programs throughout our community. And these activities and events and parks bring people together, support local tourism, and stimulate economic activity. Through the preservation of our, um, natural and historic spaces, the creation of endless recreational opportunities, and our commitment to environmental stewardship, we strengthen Clark County's sense of place and community connection. It is our long-term impact of our work, and for many families and businesses, it's the reason they choose to live, work, and invest here. Funding our parks is more than just supporting, um, support for maintaining parks. It's an investment in the people, the health, and the long-term vitality of Clark County's residents. It's also an investment in our shared future. So as you've heard me speak before, we have two thousand acres of parkland that is encompassed in thirty-three parks and facilities. We have thirty miles of scenic multi-use trails. And as you've heard many times, we're part of the largest connected paved trail system in the United States. Over three hundred and fifty miles are here in southwest Ohio, and we are one of those hubs to jump on those. These all promote physical activity, mental well-being, and also a social connection for many of our residents. We offer a wide range of youth and family programs that educate, inspire, and encourage lifelong outdoor activity in our eighteen playgrounds, fifty-two athletic venues. We also have a water park and ice arena, and we hope that everyone here in this room visits that on a regular basis. We also protect historical sites, vital green spaces, and wildlife habitats across thirteen nature preserves, safeguarding nearly twelve miles of river, twenty acres of ponds and lagoons, and a hundred and sixty-four acres of wetlands that our future generations will be able to enjoy for many, many years to come. Each year, we plant approximately two hundred trees, over twelve thousand flowers that are grown in greenhouses. And that does not include what the Master Gardeners and Halandia Garden Association do within Snyder Park. But we also remove around seven hundred tons of trash every year from our parks and along the trails. Our success is amplified through our partnerships, and, um, this is with local organizations, businesses, corporations, and volunteers who collectively have invested millions of dollars to expand the recreational opportunities in Clark County. I just want to mention a few because they're very important to who we are and what we do. The one is Snyder Park Gardens and Arboretum. And this is in partnership with OSU Extension, the Master Gardeners, Kiwanis Club, and Halandia Garden Association. It not only provides beautiful landscapes, but offers educational programs and is also on track to become a certified arboretum in the near future. So we're very proud of what's happened there at Snyder Park. The NTPRD Ice, um, Chiller Ice Arena is owned and op- is operated by the Chiller, but it is owned by the Park District. And they offer classes, programs, host tournaments, and teams come from many states within this region just to visit our city and participate in ice sports. The Champion City Kings play all of their games, their home games, at Carlton-Davidson Stadium there on Mitchell Boulevard. And that is a bat, a wood bat league that brings in teams from, I think it's six other states at this point. They, um, usually have around three hundred fans per game. And then we have this, of course, the Springfield Art Council Summer Art, um, Festival. And next year will be their sixtieth year. It's the longest-running free art council series in the United States. So that's something we should be very proud of. And they bring thousands and thousands of people to Veterans Park every single evening, that six weeks during the summer. And then, of course, we have the Rotary Food Truck Competition, where over fifteen thousand people visit Veterans Park to indulge in all those yummy foods. Um, usually it's on a Saturday in August or September. And then the Rotary is also responsible for the, um, Centennial Park, which is the ADA accessible playground at Snyder Park. We, um, are driven through to our success because of the residents of our community. And in two thousand and eleven, our organization, when we were National Trail, partnered with the Clark County Park District, attempted to have one last chance to pass a levy to get support for our parks. And in two thousand and eleven, we were able to pass our first ever levy by a fifty-seven percent voter approval. And we won eighty-four of the one hundred precincts. And that was a huge feat after it had been defeated seven different times. We came back five years later and did a ten-year levy. And that time, it, um, passed by a sixty-six percent approval rating. And we were able to win every single precinct in Clark County. And ninety percent of those won by sixty percent or more. So I like to believe that's a testament to what we are offering our community, that our community feels value in it, and that we are providing vital programs, events, and spaces for people to recreate together. That was very evident in two thousand and twenty when COVID hit and everything shut down. People flocked to the parks, to our trails, because it was somewhere that they could be with their family and see other people and still be at a safe distance. So we, um, became very important during those days. Um, the results of these past two levies clearly demonstrate the strong community support. And looking ahead, our future is bright. And none of this success would be possible without the continued, um, support and partnership that we have from our community leaders such as yourself. Um, we are proud to serve, as I said, a vital, dynamic part of Clark County's future. Through parks, trails, programs, and partnerships, we will continue to enhance the quality of life, foster community engagement, and support the socie- social and economic vitality of our region. We are very pleased that we are a part of this community and hope that we will be for a very long time. And we appreciate the city's ongoing partnership and investment in the parks, not only for the properties that you own, but for all of the residents of Clark County who are able to enjoy those every single day. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you had any questions for me? I know Hal wants to say a few things when we're finished, but I want to.
As the mayor said, um, I'm Hal Goodrich, um, Chairman of the Committee for the Parks. I'd like to, uh, recognize those people who, volunteers who are also on the committee that have worked very hard. If they could just put their hands up. Anybody back here that is on the committee, so you can see, uh, really, um, great thanks to them for all the hard work they've done. First of all, um, I'd like to give thanks to Brian and all the current and former Commissioners for your support of the parks in general and in the recent merger in particular. Uh, the Park District, as you probably know, has a, um, replacement levy on the ballot November fourth. It's a ten-year levy, and it's the same point-six or six-tenths of a mil rate. It's been paid by the taxpayers since two thousand and eleven. It'll cost the taxpayers approximately twenty-one dollars. Again, that's twenty-one dollars annually per one hundred thousand dollars assessed value. It'll mean an increase of about six dollars annually for the taxpayers per one hundred thousand dollars, less than a six-pack of pop. It'll generate about a million nine hundred thousand dollars a year, which is an increase of about a half a million dollars, which will be used in part to catch up on much-needed deferred maintenance. The levy funds will, uh, provide approximately seventy-five percent of the property maintenance of our parks. Again, I'm going to say that. The levy money will give its fund about seventy-five percent of the maintenance of our parks. Our parks are extremely well-run and very efficient, thanks to our great staff. Our operating expenditures are one-third the national median. And our per capita cost is one-fifth of the national average. That's done by, from a national survey of parks. There's been no change in the levy income for fifteen years since two thousand and eleven. Can you, any of us imagine not having an increase in our Social Security checks or our paychecks for fifteen years? Passage to this levy will ensure clean, safe parks for many, many years to come. The Committee for Parks encourages the city Commissioners to endorse the passage of the levy. We ask all voters to, to, to vote for the passage of the levy. And last, I'd like to mention that we have a few extra yard signs in the rear. If anybody would like to take one home, I think there's just a few left. But, um, my good wife up here, Beth, is, uh, hurting over them. So if you're interested, please go grab one. Thank you very much for allowing. Thank you very much for allowing for me this time.
Well, I want to thank you and your committee for taking this on to, uh, hopefully pass this levy. Leanne, I'm curious, how many, uh, you may have said this, how many programs, uh, are you responsible with the parks?
We probably offer, um, close to a thousand programs every year.
And 99% are for youth, right?
That's true. We are now starting at, um, six months old and I like to say up to 120 years old. Um, but today when I left the office, there was, um, our physical fitness class, I think it's called the groove class, and that's for preschoolers. And there were 10 cars, 10 different families were there enjoying that today. So, um, I like Tracy has mentioned before, I always hate to hear when people say there's nothing for us to do in this community. When we have these books filled with activities for all ages, we encourage everyone to, um, find out more about it. If you don't know about us, stop by our office, call us, check out our website. Um, if you have an idea for something we should be offering, let us know and we will see what we can do to start something.
Excellent. This is one of the greatest assets we have in our community and, and you have always led it so well and just appreciate your leadership. I say it every time you speak, but it is true. And, uh, and you seem to do more and take on more and bring more to the plate every year and I appreciate that. So other comments from commissioners?
I'm going to recommend at the end of the legislative agenda that the commission offer a resolution of support for the Clark County Park District levy.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thanks for sharing your information.
Thank you for your time.
Is there a motion to conclude the work session?
So moved.
They're moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Okay, the formal meeting for city commissions called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Stand for invocation. I'm going to ask, uh, Aaron Roy to lead us invocation, followed by the pledge. Let's pray.
Father, we thank you for, um, just the city that we have, um, with all its beauty, with all its challenges. We're just grateful and, uh, we pray that we would continue to become a city where people are heard and seen and valued. Uh, we just thank you for the leadership. We just pray your wisdom and discernment with them. Thank you for all the people that are just serving the community. And we thank you for this meeting. We just pray God that we would be good listeners and that we would respect one another. And we just thank you for this time in your name, man.
Is there a motion to approve minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. The city commission remains committed to creating a conducive environment for constructive and productive dialogue and engagement for our community. Those wishing to speak must fill out a public comment card, provide their name and address for the record. A state-issued ID or driver's license must be provided while filling out the card and only those residing in Springfield and Clark County will be permitted to speak during the public comment period. Those who've determined not to provide fa- those who've determined who have provided false information on the card will not be permitted to be, speak at this meeting or the next scheduled meeting. While honoring First Amendment principles, the city commission reserves the right to regulate the time, place and manner of public comments to ensure the proceedings remain orderly, respectful and conducive to constructive dialogue. While we fully respect First Amendment rights of all individuals, disruptions or any kind of conduct that impedes the orderly progress of the meeting will not be tolerated. Should any individual be escorted or asked to leave due to disruptive behavior on three separate occasions, they'll be notified they're considered trespass and cannot attend future city commission meetings. After the public comment period, city commission may respond to matters brought forth during the public, uh, comment period. And also will direct the city manager and staff to answer questions posed during that comment period. And they will also get back with you if they can't give you the answer tonight. We'll start with Gary Armstrong.
I appreciated getting two letters from attorneys. That was the third one, including the one I had a year ago from the, the guy's, uh, new wife that said, uh, you better stop calling a guy a liar. I said, well, if he stops telling me lies, like when he's in my backyard using the word MF and MFF. And when I said you build a four unit, you know what? How can a guy lie to your face like that? Four mailboxes across the street? What'd you do? Love mailboxes? No. You know what I'm saying? Cause I've said this for three years. I've been saying that you let LLCs come into this town, screw the locals around on their rents, let these people come in and buy housing and turn our neighborhoods into commercial markets. Well, this guy, uh, local attorney wrote this thing, which agreed with everything I was saying the last couple of years. The commission has created an untenable housing crisis by purposely, uh, purposefully abandoning prior practices for the consistent code enforcement. The commission has permitted unscrupulous landlords to proliferate unsaved tenements which have caused their occupants to live in substandard conditions. Have created substandard occupational hazards for public safety officers who are dispatched to such tenements and cause long-term residents to be squeezed out of local housing market. Everything I said, but he said it so much better that I can speak because I'm certainly not a public speaker, as you all can testify. But it sickens me because I am a kind of a real cat about honesty. And when I read the words that I said, and I went through an article on July 12th, when you were out at the firehouse and making statements that were totally not true. And I'll get into that. But the truth will always set people free. It's an old adage, but I don't call anybody a skunk unless they're a skunk. And if they're a skunk, then they got to prove they're not a skunk. And if you lie, you have to prove that what you said wasn't a lie. Then you have to prove that it wasn't intentional. But it's pretty easy to tell the truth about all of that. Anyway, sent to me in eight, 1924. Ohio Chamber of Congress joined Ohio Businesses for Immigration Solutions, a coalition of 81 businesses, trade organizations, city chambers, economic development groups and Greater Springfield partnerships who support common sense Haitian immigration reform. Well, when I, I heard from several sources that one man was, wanted to run totally unopposed for leadership of this county and he won, I knew where the agenda that I said, you have an agenda. When the things I tell you about how you're letting the housing fall apart and all these LLCs, every time I said it, the guy next door to me now pays, uh, regular water rates while I'm struggling, my water rates has doubled, he's increased his single family to four units.
Diane Daniels?
He gets it for free. Or not free, but.
Good evening. Simon Kenton first laid eyes on this part of Ohio in 1778 as the captive of the Shawnee. What he observed caused him to vow to return fertile soil, abundant resources of game, woodlands, prairie and water. Kenton and his associate Colonel William Ward returned here to Clark County in 1799, bringing with them settlers from Kentucky. What exactly makes this part of Ohio so special and worth preserving? It's the soil. Well, it's just dirt, right? Just dirt. Oh no, it's not just dirt. It is our collective legacy. A combination of repeated glacial periods over thousands of years has resulted in deposits of rich minerals and nutrients. Our soil was deposited slowly as the glaciers retreated. The most recent Wisconsin glaciation left feet of glacial tip fill and the depressions left by the way to the glaciers. With the addition of the biotics and glogs and fens created in those suppressions gives this region this unique and valuable soil, a soil biome which cannot be replicated. Because of its agricultural history, Springfield is known as the champion city. A name earned because Springfield was home to the Champion Reaper Company. The Champion Reaper revolutionized farming and led to other significant industrial firsts. Many of these other industrial firsts were also tied to the soil and built right here in Clark County. We are also home to the creator of the 4H, a significant part of every agricultural community across all of the United States and tied to the soil. Simon Kenton remembered this area, Springfield, Ohio, Clark County, excuse me, for what he saw. Rolling plains of native grasses, massive woodlands of oak, maple and walnut, towering escarpments of obtainable limestone, abundant game, clear cold freshwater springs and abundance of rich, deep loamy soil. The first people, the Shawnee, told Simon that all you need to do is poke a hole in the soil, put in the seeds and whatever you planted would grow. And a pinch, they advised him that if you were desperate and hungry to eat a little soil, as it was rich enough to sustain you. Industrial level soil, solar projects strip the topsoil, the part that grows stuff, down to the clay substrate. They do this to control plant growth and to facilitate the installation of the required infrastructure. The concrete bases for panels, the endless wiring, the drainage channels needed to control runoff, since there will be no soil to control drainage. Once the soil is removed, it is now dying. The combination of microbes, insects, minerals and native natural chemicals is disturbed, essentially killing the soil. Big solar projects say, ha, ha, don't worry, we can put it just the way it was. With what? Dead soil? That took thousands of years to make? There is no industrial level solar project that has aged out and been returned to productive use. That's a big if for five square miles of prime farmland, 3,200 acres in Harmony Township.
Thank you for your comments, Melissa Rexroth.
Last meeting, I asked about the 5C data center. I asked if anyone researched how, once it is operational, it will affect our resources. Studies show the prices of electricity and water will skyrocket due to demand. Brian only stated the building was built to electric code, which was not a question I'd asked. How will the center benefit Springfield residents when they cannot afford their electric bills? Or when water could become scarce due to the, due to the data center's consumption? What protections has the city put in place for its residents? What cooling system will it have? Is the water plant prepared for what is to come? Will it pollute our water supply? Why are so many tax abatements given so freely when the city is in such despair? I am not alone in asking that the city stop giving tax abatements to big builders. I had asked how you research items on the agenda and Bridget stated she reads what is given to her. If she has questions, she asks Brian. Who prepares the paper and the links? Does anyone do their due diligence and do independent research into any of the topics? How do you know what is being handed to you is the complete picture and all facts you need to make a true informed decision when voting? I had also asked what the mayor's stance was on Springfield, Ohio being a welcoming city. Bridget answered Springfield is not and never has been a welcoming city. I attempted to provide fact, but was told by Mr. Rue to not speak, yet Bridget was allowed to speak on truths. I have a pile here. One shows, and I appreciate Crystal, you attempting to crack her. Thank you. I typically do not speak on something unless I know it to be true and factual and have sources. Today I have resolution 5844, signed by Warren Copeland on July 22nd, 2014. It states, "This commission recognizes that population decline is a threat to economic stability and proactive approach to immigrants can help to offset the loss of working age residents anticipated in the future." That verbiage matches that of the United Nations Replacement Migration summary I read last time. It states, "Replacement migration is needed to offset declines in the size of population and declines in the population of working age." I also have news articles where Carl Ruby began leading this venture in 2014. His hope was to start a nonprofit to recruit immigrants and give them skills to be homeowners and business owners, revitalize and rebuild the community. I am formally asking the city of Springfield to rescind the welcoming city resolution 5844 signed July 22nd, 2014 and ask that you focus on supporting current city residents. Lastly, I have data from the FBI website showing Springfield, Springfield's violent crime has roughly doubled in 2021. What caused the sharp increase? We have always had a high crime rate, but this was absolutely shocking. I didn't bring those numbers with me, but it was a steady rate up until 2021. 2021, sharp increase, 21, 22, 23, 24. It's there on the FBI website.
Thank you. Uh, point of fact from the last meeting, I think the correction was you take the initiative welcoming city, I believe that's what Ms. House is speaking to. And then I also agree with, uh, Ms. Crystal, what she said is that we are, that we're, we are a welcoming city, being a city that has welcomed people, not an organization that we were necessarily, that Bridget was, I believe, speaking. Is that right? Want to, no, I don't want to speak for you, but I think.
I definitely just wanted to say, Ms. Melissa, I, I wasn't.
This isn't a dialogue. You can have a seat. Thank you so much.
That's what I was trying to facilitate, just so that we were on the same page. It wasn't so much a correction to her or to you to deny what you were saying. It was truly to try to facilitate, um, a dialogue that we both were on the, everybody was on the same page. I just felt like maybe we, we were, it was a semantics piece. So I just wanted to speak to that, that I, I guess I did want to enter into a dialogue. So since we can't, then I, I do want to.
It's fine to have a dialogue, it's just not the form for it, this place. That's all. Ma'am, thank you.
So I just wanted to say that, Ms. Melissa, thank you.
Yep.
Um, just a point of clarity, Brian, uh, regardless of the resolution that was passed 10-plus years ago by a completely separate commission, does it have any legal standing? And have we ever formally taken the steps to be certified as a welcoming city through welcoming, through Welcome America?
Uh, the second part to that, no, we have never taken those formal steps, as you mentioned, Welcome America. And then I think Jill can speaks to what a resolution does and when it expires technically.
So a resolution is temporary in nature as opposed to an ordinance which is permanent in nature. Um, but we are not part of the Welcome America network. I did verify that last fall with the director. So the city of Springfield is not part of that network.
And just like, uh, Ms. Tackett brought up tonight about supporting the Parks District, that will be a resolution. And that resolution essentially ends after the election, after its pastor fails, hopefully passes. That's a resolution that we are resolving to support that initiative at that time and that timeframe.
So in that time, what, what's the typical, um, for that specific, um, resolution? What was the expiration on that?
It didn't have a time period on it at all. It did not have an effective date. It did not have, I should say, a date that, um, anyone was want to be part of a network. It was specific for that, but it was, we were never part of a network.
I don't care.
Thank you, Diane. You're dismissed for.
That welcoming resolution is.
Thank you. Diane, this is your third also, by the way.
I don't care if we're not a welcoming city. If we don't belong to the Welcome America.
Take care, Diane.
That's the blueprint. That's how you destroyed this city and you've done it, wiped it off. Go ahead, send me the letter. My attorney can't wait.
Just one more question, Jill. Would, like if we did rescind the ordinance, we've talked about it before at prior meetings, would anything change?
No, if you rescinded an ordinance, a resolution, it would not.
Sorry, the resolution, I'm sorry.
Right. It would not change anything because it didn't create, um, the city to be a welcoming city as far as the network goes. So there's nothing action-wise that we need to do.
Okay.
I do have a comment. As, as I'm leaving this seat, I just really want to impress upon this city. And nobody's against anybody, especially from my vantage point, right? Um, there are so many things that we can't control from these seats that I feel like we just get blamed for every single thing that exists. And people oftentimes say, I'm going to fight the city. If we could move to, um, I want to engage with the city or, you know, we just got to figure out a better way to communicate with one another than yelling at each other, making us all villains and everybody else is so perfect and that every systemic issue of this country is at the hands and the feet of this city commission. Uh, it just is mind-blowing. So moving forward, if we could have. It just is mind-blowing, so moving forward, if we could have civil conversations and just try to move us forward, at least for the next two months that I'm here.
I was just going to address the water piece of the ICDC data center. I'll have Chris Moore speak specifically on that, but anytime a project comes forward, our utilities divisions, which operate under our service department, look at those projects and look at water, sewer, stormwater, to evaluate the impacts that it would have on our systems, and whether or not it would be a negative or a bad impact, or we could not support the project because we don't have the capacity.
So this particular project is estimated to use roughly 300,000 gallons of water per day. So to put that into perspective, that would be about 3% of what we pump in a given day. That would put them right around on our top five biggest customers, but not our largest customer. Our water treatment plant has the capacity to pump more than double what it is at this point, so as it stands now, this project would use a fraction of what we pump in a given day. If they did increase, we have a lot of room to grow. So a user of this size is actually a great thing for a water utility, because it is one large customer, and it requires much less attention than several small customers.
Isn't there an initiative in some of these data centers to look at gray water usage to cool some of the, I think they need to use water for?
Yes, we investigated some of that with them, and as things stand right now, they will be using our water to cool, but they will be able, most of it will evaporate in the cooling process. What doesn't evaporate should be able to be treated enough to end up in their detention bond, so will not go in the sewer system and be treated in that fashion.
Okay. And as it relates to the electric rates, certainly we don't control the electric rates, but I do know at the state of Ohio, they are looking at legislation on controlling or limiting new data centers for a period of time as they evaluate how data centers can specifically be charged, as opposed to it being spread out across all ratepayers like us, because they are such a large user of electricity. So I know the state of Ohio, who has that legislative authority over those private utility companies, is examining that.
Any other questions? Other comments from commissioners? Comments outside of the comments? No, yes?
Just want to remind everyone that this Friday is downtown trick-or-treat. It's 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The streets will shut down at 4:30, the main roads here, and in advance, I just want to thank all the businesses that come together, including the brick and mortars down here, but even further out than that, we have, we welcome other businesses to come in and set up as a community. I want to thank News-Sun for their coverage on it and helping us get the word out, and then all the volunteers that help put that on, or puts it on. This is not something that we fundraise for. It is a $600, everybody throws in $50 type of grassroots event, so it is, we're on our eighth year, eighth year, and it truly is just the community coming together to create an event together, so. And also thanks to the Sheriff's Department, SPD, and the Fire Department for participating every year and this year. Thank you.
I also want to add, on that same day, Culture Cafe on Murray Street, they were before us a couple of months ago, starting their business. Well, that business is now open, it's running, it's a great place, I was just in there today. They're also having, like, a harvest event on that same night, where they'll be giving samples of their coffees, of their hot cocoa, there'll be samples of food available there as well, and there's also candy for children, so it's a full-family event, and they're also partnering with Lagonda Elementary School as well, which I serve Lagonda, so I'm really excited about that. So after you head from downtown, then head on out to Murray or vice versa, but that day, you have lots and lots of things for the kids to do in good old Springfield, Ohio.
Eric, can I clarify again, that 24th on Friday is for downtown-specific? I know I get asked this all the time, the sheriff sets the county trick-or-treat, and that actually is the 25th, so the next day, so double up.
I'm sorry, you said yours was on the 24th?
Yes, downtown.
No, I'm so sorry, then the Culture Cafe is on the 31st. I thought you were actually talking on the actual day, I'm so sorry, I missed that. So on the 31st, ladies and gentlemen, come out to the Culture Cafe, it's going to be a good time.
24th, downtown trick-or-treat, 25th, county trick-or-treat, 31st-
Culture Cafe.
Culture Cafe and my birthday, but anyway. Another day, whatever. Also, I want to say, Commissioner Tackett and I got to attend the inauguration of the Wittenberg President, and if you have a chance to be in an area where you can maybe meet Dr. Brady, he is a passionate leader for this next stage for Wittenberg, and we're really excited, really excited to see his leadership take hold of the Wittenberg way. Okay? All right, we're going to go ahead and continue with first readings.
Approving and authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing cooperative agreement by and among the City of Springfield, Ohio, West Central Ohio Port Authority, Sycamore Ridge Project 1 LLC, or its designee, an urgent institutional trust company to provide for development in the city. Authorizing the city manager to execute an environmental covenant by and among the Clark County Land Reutilization Corporation, the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, and the city for the former Greater Euclid Element Site located at 501 to 504 Euclid Avenue and 1029 Plum Street.
Other comments? Well, actually, go ahead, city manager, why don't you go ahead and explain these?
Yes, the first one, 240-25, this is a tax increment financing or TIF agreement that was in place and is being updated for the project, but again, this is one, design, develop, construct, who is the developer, worked in advance with the school district, which in this case is Clark Shawnee School District, and making sure that it met the needs of the school, and one of the requests from the schools is upfront cash payment, because, yes, they recognize it will generate new kids or new students, and they need to be able to invest ahead of time, and so at each bond issuance, which is planned three different bond issuances over the period of this project, they will receive a cash payment of net present value of what they would receive. After year 10, they're 100% made whole, but during those first 10 years with those three bond issuances, the school district will receive a cash payment to the equivalent of 35% of the new tax generated, again, net present value for the development of this project. And so this is an example, is the evolution of these agreements that developers are working directly with the school districts to try to overcome some of the barriers that exist there. The second one is the next step in the process of executing an environmental covenant, which will allow for a covenant not to sue to be on a former industrial property, the Greater Euclid Element Site on Euclid Avenue, as well as an address on Plum Street. This also includes what many refer to as the Sunflower Field in that area, but this puts it in play that that property can be redeveloped and no concerns of environmental harm or environmental remediation needs going forward.
Other comments from commissioners on first readings? Comments from the audience on first readings only? Hearing no more continuous second readings?
Amending Ordinance Number 91-90, passed March 12, 1991, and commonly known as the Codified Ordinances of the City of Springfield, Ohio, by amending certain provisions of Section 1501.01, entitled Ohio Fire Code Adoption, and Section 1503.10, now entitled Schedule of Fees and Rulemaking Authority.
Been moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. City manager, you want to go ahead and just recap what we're doing here?
Yeah, recap, and then we'll have Chief King speak briefly as well, but, so 1501.01 deals with food trucks, so right now, food trucks go through a health department permit process. Oftentimes, it leads to the need for our fire division to come inspect a hood, or, you know, oftentimes, there's fry baskets, those types of things that we have to look at and make sure are up to code. Right now, we have no permit process in place for that, so this would allow for us to put that into our codes, and then Section 1503.10 provides the opportunity for the fire chief to recommend fees for non-core services of, that the fire division is providing. One of those examples is non-emergent and non-transport runs to nursing facilities, fire alarms, so oftentimes, businesses will not maintain or keep up with their fire alarm maintenance, and we're constantly responding to those false alarms. Buster, which is the Bureau of Underground Storage Tank and Removal, we have to inspect those, and we really are, this would allow us to keep our fees consistent with what the state would charge as well for us doing those inspections.
Eric, commissioners, city manager, thank you. Yes, exactly, this will allow us to capture those fees associated with products that aren't part of our core services, which is firefighting and emergency medical services, and so, so we can capture that. I think the area that has taken the largest interest is associated with the low-acuity EMS calls that we had presented. I just wanted to clarify for our community that that is not for our residents living in their own homes. That is specifically associated with assisted-living nursing home facilities is where we have the opportunity for some time there, for them to take more appropriate resources to transport them for medical care outside of a single resident. A resident who calls us that ends up being a non-removal or needed a lithysis, there's no charge to that. They don't live in a care facility that has a nurse, LPN, a technician, a doctor on call, right, to do an assessment, to discuss, right? We transport people to the emergency room to get those resources, or they stay in a facility that has those resources on site. And so the Medicare/Medicaid guidelines clearly articulate areas where you shouldn't be using emergency services. That area has grown significantly across the entire U.S. with this issue, and so we're trying to get ahead of it, and hopefully reduce some of our calls, so we can reduce potentially, you know, 60% of the calls to these facilities, which is around 2,000 calls. I think it's very appropriate of us to take this step and for you to pass this. The difference would be, is that they come, we work with those facilities to establish criteria for what patients to call, what patients to use other modes of transportation for, and if they use this inappropriately, that there'll be a fee of $500 for that. It's taking our services away from our residents living in the city here that are emergencies that need our assistance versus ones that could wait a while to be taken to the hospital in some cases. We also understand that there will be patients in these facilities that will have real emergencies that we need to transport. There wouldn't be a user fee associated with that to the facility. The reduction we're looking for is so that we can reduce our overall call volume growth, right? If we can reduce the call volume, which I believe we will, by 2,000 calls, that is going to save our community and taxpayers a half a million dollars a year, just in payroll, and the $359,000 it was going to cost for a new ambulance. But those calls, we have to put another ambulance in service, two more personnel on the street every day. This is a way for us to be good stewards, I think, of our taxpayer dollars, to hold off from transporting these types of calls and have them processed more appropriately through other resources.
Chief, my question is, assume you'll be willing to meet with these groups and speak, I know you speak transparently, but be accurate on why the charge is $500, and I'm going to guess it actually is far more than $500 for two of our paramedics, and a $379,000 medic, and a $45,000 cot, along with its equipment, to go into one of these facilities just to do a simple transport that was non-emergent. More than $500, am I right?
100%.
Okay. So those figures would be good to have, show a comparison of what it actually costs and what we're actually going to charge, and that this is actually a deterrent fee? Would that be accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
I hope to collect nothing.
Yeah.
I hope to not bill any.
Yeah.
Honestly, that's our overall goal, is the diversion to a different resources and more appropriate pathway for them to get their follow-on care versus just calling 911.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments from commissioners?
Just curious to know, how many facilities do we have in this city?
So we have 10 fully licensed skilled nursing centers and eight assisted-living centers that are licensed as that, and we have a few other healthcare-type facilities that are generating, that will be included in this, that are an inpatient unit, that is serving either mental health or through drug addictions, that will also be shown the criteria for the fees.
So in urgent care, they have an episode, I guess, in urgent care that's beyond their control, is that, that's an emergent, right?
Yes, sir.
Because I've seen, obviously, your call goes directly to these urgent care facilities.
That's correct, and they're being evaluated by a nurse and a doctor, or says, hey, we can't, your problems are greater than what we can do for you, we need you to go emergent to the emergency room.
Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for clarifying the private homeowners versus facilities, and I know, also, thank you, I know you do a lot of work with other community entities on helping residents age in their homes if they would like to. I just, my question was, I believe there is an example of another city in the Midwest that did this, would you be willing to state that, because I forget which one it was?
Westerville.
Okay.
So if you, and Illinois has taken a pretty significant leap statewide with legislation to actually do the same thing that we're doing here, or the entire state of Illinois, and so there are several other departments that are looking into this, some in Texas and Colorado and California, that have put these in place. They have all seen around a 60% to 62% reduction in these inadvertent calls.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Other comments from the audience? Please go to the microphone, ma'am, thank you. If you just simply state your name only for it.
Okay, Darlene Yeeley.
Thank you.
I just, I know there's going to be a lot of clarification that's going to be needed on this, from what I've heard in different places, so, and I also know that you have a big problem with non-emergent calls of home residences. Will there be a charge for those people, or are you addressing that in any way?
That is not planned at this time with this ordinance. This is specifically, so again, as the chief stated, we have almost a quarter of our runs, our EMS runs are to these assisted nursing and skilled nursing facilities, and 65% of those runs are either non-emergent or non-transport, so we're trying to look at that large picture of where we're being overtasked, overburdened by these non-emergent, non-transport calls, and as he said, create a diversion to more appropriate resources for those types of calls.
Okay, so I just want to clarify for the community-
Yes, that-
-that personal home houses, that they won't get charged-
Correct. Outside of their normal insurance process, we do what's called a soft billing, where your insurance would receive a bill, they will pay the portion that they will pay. As you know, many insurances, Medicare, Medicaid, commercial payers have an amount that they will pay for that type of service. Our residents are billed to their insurance again, and then they do not receive the remainder of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call roll, excuse me, call roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment Number 1 to the contract with Dynegy Energy Services East LLC to include an account for unmeasured streetlights.
Been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, are the comments from commissioners? From the audience? Call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number one to the Brownfield Remediation Program Subrecipient Agreement with Park County Land Reutilization Corporation to remove Zero Sunset Avenue and reduce funding accepted for environmental assessments assessments by $56,500 for a total agreement amount not to exceed They'll move.
Second.
Been moved. And second, are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number two to the contract with Max solve environmental and safety consultants for environmental consulting services to amend the scope of services by removing Zero Sunset Avenue.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved. And second, are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving the execution of grant agreements with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2025 Community Development Block Grant in an amount of $1,740,154. The 2025 Emergency Solutions Grant in an amount of $155,047. And the 2025 Home Program in an amount of $439,153.88. Authorizing the city manager, law director, community development director, the finance director to do all things they deem necessary to implement, operate, and administer the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and Home Program for the 2025 fiscal year, April 1, 2025 to March 31, 2026.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved. And second, I'd probably like to have this explained and clarified.
Yes, I'll ask our community development director, Logan Cobb, to talk more on this.
Hey, Rue, commissioners, good evening. Logan Cobb, Director of Community Development. As you all know, we are a entitlement community, meaning that we are entitled to these funds. This is allowing us to enter into a grant agreement with HUD to accept these funds.
Thank you. That was simple for a long, thank you, though. Any other questions or comments from commissioners, from the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a subrecipient funding agreement with the Nehemiah Foundation to provide CDBGCV funding for the Faith Community Crisis Response Team in an amount not to exceed $28,499.95 for the period of October 1, 2025 through April 1, 2026, and confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from October 1, 2025.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved. And second, are there comments from commissioners?
Yes, can you recap this agreement, please?
Yes, ma'am, this is authorizing us to enter into an agreement with the Nehemiah Foundation. I see Aaron Roy is here representing the Nehemiah Foundation. This grant agreement would be in the amount of approximately $28,500 to operate a warming shelter this winter. The warming shelter would be located at the Salvation Army, which is 15 South Plum Street, and would officially fire up once we reached freezing temperatures, which is 32 degrees. At that point, operations would be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM with dinner and breakfast served. Excuse me. In addition, once we reach single digits, the warming shelter would operate 24 hours a day.
You know, the homelessness crisis is, you know, discussed within our community often on how to handle it. And I just want to thank Nehemiah for their work and partnership to handle this over the next coming season, winter season. If I remember correctly, you were doing a training program for people that wanted to volunteer. I just want to give you a moment to share that information out to see if anyone else was interested, if there's still signups.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Tackett. We just had our first round of orientation and training. Our goal is every time we do those to have 40 to 60 people get orientated to who Nehemiah is and what we're trying to do, as well as do some training. So we just met that goal. We have two more coming up. So if all goes well, we'll have about 150 to 180 volunteers that are ready to go. And we need our community. We need you guys. And there are so many ways that you can get involved, even if it's just dropping off food or supplies or just coming in and hanging out with folk. Our next one is November 14th, and it is a lunch one. So from 12 to 1:30, lunch will be provided, so we feed you. And that's our next orientation and training. And then November 21st, from 5:30 to 7:00 is our next orientation training after that. And then we'll do another one in December, if we haven't met the goal of getting about 180 to 200 volunteers that are ready to go.
Can you speak to an estimate on when you're open? How many volunteers are comfortably needed to operate?
Yeah, with, with each shift, especially the six to 10 shift, which is when people are coming in, when it's 32 to 10 degrees, and they're getting, you know, their meal, they're getting their cot, they're getting situated. They're also getting case management. Want to share that again, that we will have case management on site. So the six to 10 shift is where we would need the most. So we are looking to have at least eight to 12 people. But then, that is, that is the people that are on site. But then there will be also a myriad of volunteers who are dropping off supplies and donations and things like that. Our night shift, which starts about 10:00 PM and goes until 8:00, we, we are hoping to have at least six to eight people on that shift.
I'm also curious if we've ever considered or ever had some type of a, like a shuttle system to somewhere? Is that a thing?
Yeah. So in the past, when we have done the polar vortex emergency warming shelters, which is when it was in single digit, we worked with Springfield Police Department and the Fire Department. And as they were riding around doing their beat, if they saw people, then they would actually bring them to us. So that's what we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other comments from the audience?
I was just wondering, and I could be wrong about this, but the Executive Inn, I think I heard, read that it did not, Wawa did not buy. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any plans to bring that back into homeless?
There was a contract that was before the commission two years, in 2024, for a homelessness operation to be there. That contract was voted down. And so, with that, because there was a request for proposal, and it was federal dollars, we are not able to utilize that facility for homelessness operations specifically.
But you were then?
Yes, because that contract was voted down, we are not able, we had a request for proposal, and we
That's right. I remember you guys voting it down.
Yeah. And that sets up
That space to be a homeless shelter?
That is correct.
Okay. My understanding, the, you got, the city purchased the Executive Inn for the purpose of homelessness due to COVID. The city had received $44 million in grant money?
Yeah, the Executive Inn was purchased actually with general fund dollars. But the, it was for short-term homelessness operations, which during COVID, because we saw the spike during the homelessness situation. But the, the long-term play of that, and was very upfront at the beginning, was long-term economic development. It's across from one of our largest employers in town, Springfield Regional Medical Center, part of the revitalization of our downtown. And so, we did operate, Homeful operated the facility for approximately a year. And then again, when that contract was not renewed, it was not able to continue to be utilized for homelessness services. And so, we will look at what's next for that, that facility there.
I guess my biggest concern with that property is, again, I could be wrong with the numbers, but I think it was bought for 2.25 million. Money was put into it to upgrade, make it habitable, and then being sold for 1.75? So I guess I'm not understanding, if we put money into it, we're, we're fine? That doesn't sound like being a good steward of money.
Yeah. I mean, again, oftentimes with economic development projects and so forth, the, the government body will purchase properties to try to turn them around for other opportunities in a community. The hotel itself was purchased for 2 million. There were three houses that were purchased behind that that were dilapidated, blighted structures. Those have since been demolished. That's where you get the 225,000 that makes up for those three houses itself. But again, part of it is looking at long-term economic development and revitalization of that core area in the community and, and helping stimulate that.
Time it was purchased, it was be, it was able to be used as a, with some minor repairs, with some repairs that we did.
Yeah, there was not significant amount of repairs. There were some plumbing work, you know, plumbing pipes and things that had to be repaired and so forth. But for the most part, it was able to be utilized by Homeful who operated it. There were things like beds and stuff that were purchased. We actually did a call for those other nonprofit agencies in the community, if they wanted to or could utilize those beds, that we would able to transfer those to them. Groups like Project Woman, Sheltered Inc., and, and other organizations that may require those or need those.
And nobody just wanted to use that space?
Again, that space could not be utilized for homelessness services after the contract was denied.
No, it wasn't that we didn't want it to be used for that when that, when that did not pass. It was that they were telling us that they were operating a certain number of rooms.
Okay.
And they were wanting to renew their contract again for like million, I'm not going to say millions, but I forget what it was. It was in the million. But at a rate that was saying, okay, I'm operating, throwing numbers out there, do not quote me. I'm operating 200 room. So for 200 operating rooms to serve individuals in, we want this much money, million some dollars, right? But in all actuality, we're only operating, was it a quarter or something? It was like they weren't doing what that contract said.
I'm sorry. I, I can't, that's, that's not entirely, it's not, it's not entirely accurate that the, the agency was, was not, they were not operating under the board. They were operating above board. And I don't, I don't want us as a commission to say that there's a certain agency that wasn't operating above board.
That's not what I said. I did not say above board. I said that they were saying that there were certain numbers. And I just did not feel as a commissioner that we would have been, and we disagreed on that, as you can still feel that energy right now. Because I did not feel that they were doing enough work for that amount of money. So it was never amount, about us commissioners not wanting to use that site. So I'm not, I'm not saying what I'm saying to get into the muck and the mire of that whole conversation. I'm saying what I'm saying, just to make sure that it is known to the community that it wasn't about us not wanting to serve individuals who are experiencing homelessness. You see what I mean?
Kind of. And I'm sorry, I didn't know all of that. So that helps. But kind of, but I guess I'm, I'm just a little confused. They, they were just asking more money than you guys wanted to, is that right? They were asking for more grant money than
Ryan, you want to go and explain that, please?
Yeah. So what they were asking for, so they had a one-year agreement. That agreement was expiring. So we were looking to enter into a longer-term agreement with them. And there was a not-to-exceed amount. I believe it was
It was just over a million.
Three, 1.3 million. It's been since '24, sorry. But it was a not-to-exceed amount. So they would only be reimbursed for services that they actually performed or provided at the facility. So they weren't just given, or would be given 1.3. They would actually have to be providing the services and then invoice and bill for those.
Okay. And
Nevertheless, Melissa, that this, it was, this facility was used as a homeless, a temporary homeless location. And, and now, we did, we needed to have a qualified operator in there that could handle a, a facility like that. And we had one. We didn't have one anymore after, after votes. And, and so, we had to move on. And we had to move on with that property. And when a property sits in any city, it is vulnerable. And it becomes vulnerable to those that are not operating above board, folks that are taking advantage. And that may have happened to this property since then. And I would dare say we, we could not operate a safe facility in it right now. So that's why it's not being, the boards aren't coming off, and it's not being reopened as a safe shelter. Because I don't think I could sit here and tell you it would be a safe shelter right now physically. Okay?
All right, one more, just you, you brought up one point that was a little confusing. You said we had an operator, then we didn't have one. There are other operators in the city. But can you, can you speak to legally why we cannot have that as a shelter right now for risk of possible litigation?
Yeah, the procurement, we are required to procure services. And so, there was a request for proposals to operate that facility. We actually only had one proposer that submitted a proposal. And, and ultimately, it was not moved forward with, to enter into contract with them. So because there was that request for proposal, and we did not enter into contract with that agency, that agency could litigate against the city if we then just turned around and picked somebody else to run it. Because they went through the proper procurement channel and process to operate that facility. And so, that led to us not being able to move forward with it as the homeless shelter operation and start shifting gears towards, again, what, from the onset, what we originally wanted to do with that property was look at economic development opportunities.
So regardless of, regardless of, of what the facility, there would have come a point where we would have had across this conversation again, to where we'd say, hey, we're going to close this facility now. The contract has expired with, if it would have passed, and we would have moved on with, at some point, an economic development opportunity with this facility. So anyway, that's a long, a long answer. I hope you got the information you were asked for.
Eric?
Yes, go ahead.
I think that Aaron wanted to follow up on, right before that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to also share, there's been people who have contacted me in the community asking about what will our unsheltered neighbors do from the 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM where we're not open? I'm in discussions, actually just had one today with our library here on Center Street, the, the downtown branch. And there is actually a caseworker there named Katie Miller. And we are working together to ensure that that would be a warming center that is close for people to come. And I'm also working with her to ensure she has the proper resources and case management even on site during the day. So just wanted to let you guys know that. And also, if you ever want to contact me, and if you want to volunteer, or if you have any questions, I'm at aaron@nehemiahfoundation.org is my email. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll?
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing amendment number two to the contract with Ferguson Enterprises LLC doing business as Ferguson Water Works for the purchase of water meter equipment to modify the pricing structure. They'll move.
Second.
Been moved. And second, are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Clerk, call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development incentive agreement, single-family residential development to provide for water and sewer services to real property outside the city limits located at 1112 Villa Road.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved. And second, are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development incentive, sorry, a development incentive agreement, single-family residential development to provide sewer services to real property outside the city limits located at 2600 Marionette Drive.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved. And second, are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Providing for supplemental appropriations within various funds and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in seconded. Uh, finance director, you want to speak to this?
Certainly mayor and commissioners. So these are supplemental appropriations and they represent adjustment, both increases and decreases to the city's legislated funds. So that includes any fund that's not a grant agreement or a grant fund, um, where you formally approve the agreement for the budget. Um, so again, the city commission must formally approve all of those changes to ensure transparency and compliance with Ohio budgetary law. Um, some examples included in this list include an increase of $25,000 in the general fund, um, that's added for junk and trash removal. The Janus Calcetera Trust Fund, you'll recall several years ago, we had, um, Ms. Calcetera left a very generous donation to the city, um, for use by the Fire Department. We have $4,000 remaining in that fund, so we are asking you to appropriate it so that our Fire Department can utilize those monies for supplies.
And is this, is this list available to the public?
It is, so this list is available to the public again, the Friday before commission meeting. And when you pull up that full agenda on springfieldohio.gov, um, you can see a full list of all of these.
Comments from commissioners? From the audience? Clerk, call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming purchases and obtaining of services for the city and providing for payments therefore and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second. Are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Clerk, call the roll?
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Hold please. No, go ahead, Miss Melissa.
Purchases are...
Do you want to speak to these, uh, please Katie? Is that all right? Can we do the same thing?
Certainly, so a moral obligation is anytime that the city incurs an expense over $100 for a good or service without having a purchase order in place. So our charter requires that commission approves those items for payment. Um, so for example, some of these include, and that full list is available on the website, just like the supplemental appropriations. Um, but an example includes, um, with our lead service line replacement. Um, residents can come and apply for that program, but more than likely, they've already had that water line replaced because they've been without water, so it was a more emergent situation for them. But we didn't have the purchase order in place to pay that plumber and that homeowner until after the work had already been performed to, um, restore their water service. So that is two of the examples that are on the agenda tonight, um, is to make payment to those plumbers and homeowners.
Thank you. Other comments? Clerk, call roll?
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Amending ordinance number 25-138 to revise the transfer of monies authorized and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in seconded. You want to clarify this as well, please?
Certainly mayor, so a transfer of monies, um, is again required legislative action by commission to approve the actual transfer of cash from one fund to another. Um, we are just updating this list, there's two changes. Um, one is a transfer of $135,000 from the Special Assessment Bond Retirement Fund to the Economic Development Incentive Fund. And that's simply returning unused subsidy dollars from economic development to that bond service, um, retirement fund. Um, because we've now received payment of those special assessments through property taxes, so we're returning that excess cash to the Economic Development Fund. Um, another example of that, the, or the other one that's included on this agenda, um, is an additional $220,000 to that Technology Capital Project Fund, um, from the city's general fund. And that's where we've, um, been able to allocate cash over the past decade to pay for that extensive, um, overall technology improvement project. As we know, um, we've replaced our ERP system, that black and green screen with Oracle. Um, we look at City Works to improve the services that we're providing to our residents, but also moving from pen and paper, um, to gain more efficiencies as we work, um, to, again, be fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars, so finding those efficiencies with those upgrades in technology. So we, commission has already approved these contracts for these services, we're just aligning where the funding is coming from, um, so that we include all of those costs in that Technology Capital Project Fund.
Thank you. Other comments from the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept funding from the Ohio Department of Transportation for this SYI 2026 Urban Transit Program Grant for preventative maintenance assistance in the amount of $328,196. Authorizing the city manager, finance director and law director to perform all acts and execute all documents they consider necessary to fulfill the city's obligations under said grant applications and corresponding agreement and to comply with all relevant local, state and federal legal requirements and to provide assurances and additional information as required by the Ohio Department of Transportation, confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from July 1, 2025 and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Or ca, or call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept and enter into a cooperative agreement to finance a portion of the city's water treatment plant control system upgrade project with the Ohio Water Development Authority. Authorizing the city manager, finance director and law director, and comply with all relevant local, state and federal legal requirements and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number one to the contract with Commerce Controls Incorporated for Phase Two of the Control System Upgrade Project at the Water Treatment Plant to establish the guaranteed maximum price of $5,416,502 for the Phase Two for a total contract amount not to exceed $6,395,395,400 and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in seconded. Are there comments from commissioners? From the audience? Clerk, call the roll?
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the rental of employee uniforms, mop, mats and towels from Centos Corporation for an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the initial three-year period with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods through Omnia Partners pursuant to the Omnia Partners Contract Purchasing Cooperative Program in accordance with the provisions of Section 9.48 of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in seconded. Are there comments from commissioners?
I do just have one question. Um, what, is it cheaper to rent them than buy them? And would it be more beneficial to buy them?
Yeah, uh, because of the usage on them, it is better for us to essentially rent those uniforms because they have to be changed out periodically versus buying them and then they get ripped and then you're buying new ones. Uh, the advantage of this too, so Centos used to be on a state contract, uh, they fell off of that state contract, so we were paying kind of out of contract prices for a couple months. Uh, this going under this Omnia Partners contract with Centos gets us back down, uh, to a better rate for that. And by, uh, bundling up the, not only the uniforms, but the mops, mats, towels, those things as well.
Sure, thank you. Comments from the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Confirming and approving change order number six to the contract with RB Jergens Contractors Incorporated for the CLA Yellow Springs Street Reconstruction Phase Two Project, PID 109607 to increase the contract in an amount not to exceed $14,993.52 for a total amount not to exceed $4,2118.3 and to extend the completion date to December 31, 2025, authorizing the city manager to execute said change order number six and declaring an emergency therein.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in seconded. Are there comments from commissioners?
Can you speak to this one?
Yes, uh, so this was for the Phase Two construction, um, pleasant to about grand of, uh, South Yellow Springs Street, which I'm glad to say is done. This is a final change order. Um, so in ODOT's contracts, if you are 25% or more under the quantities, the contractor can increase the amount to the line items to make up the difference that they had originally bid. So there's 14,993 of that, uh, of adjustments to the contractor, uh, paid for with ODOT and sewer dollars, so nothing impacting the general fund.
Are comments from the audience? Or call the roll?
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an addendum to the Community Based Corrections Subsidy Grant Agreement for Community Corrections Programs by and between the city and the State of Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, Division of Parole and Community Services Bureau of Community Sanctions to accept additional grant funding in the amount of $13,838.3 for a total grant amount not to exceed $336,346.